We'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of Kingsville City Commission order. It's Monday, October 26, 2015. All five commission members are present. We open our meetings with prayer and pledge allegiance. If you care to join us, please stand.
Father, we ask that you be here with us tonight and always. Help, guide us to do your will in all that we do and all that we say for the betterment of this community, the state, and the nation. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Okay, we need the next order of business approved minutes of the previous meeting. I think it was October 12th meeting.
Senator.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Libber to approve minutes with second by Commissioner Beckless and Commissioner Garcia. Brock, we'll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Lubin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckless.
Yes.
Commissioner Vanier.
I'm staying.
Mayor Pugh.
I'm staying.
We have no public hearings. We'll go on to reports from officials staff.
Yes, sir. There's a few items. First of all, I wanted to remind staff that tomorrow at 9:30 and 1:30, the risk manager will be having her monthly safety training on slips, trips, and falls here in this room. On Wednesday, the 28th, the city will be helping to sponsor the seventh annual safety treatment event in downtown Kingsville from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. They're focusing on recycling as well as informing the public about code enforcement issues. The Run For Your Life event that was scheduled for this past Saturday for obvious reasons was canceled with the weather being what it was. And so park staff has contacted some individuals who had made donations to see if they wanted either to get a refund or to have those funds be used for other parks events later this year. And so for that reason, we're going to ask the commission to not take any action on item number nine, which was the acceptance of the donations, and item number 10 until we have a chance to hear back from the sponsors.
Great.
The next regular city commission meeting is in two weeks on November the 9th. And so the agenda deadline and staff reports will be due this Friday, October the 30th, by 5:00 p.m. And I just wanted to also notify the commission that we received notice today. I can't even remember how many years in a row this is now, but thanks to the commission and city staff, especially finance staff, the city received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. It's the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting. And that was from the government office, Finance Officers Association. And they're going to send us that nice little plaque that will go up in the city hallway upstairs.
Good.
And then the downtown manager has also provided some information today about a downtown online survey project that the Texas Historical Commission will be hosting with 73 certified local governments and 87 local Main Street programs as their initial target users. Some of the information that we had done recently on the inventory with the university would be helpful for this. There'll be some additional information that would be needed if we choose to participate. We would need to apply. There is no cash match, no funding requirements. Any costs associated with this would be covered because it is a pilot program and they'll be working on software for about five months with the local governments. But anyhow, we just got notified and that grant applications are due November the 4th. But that would be beneficial because you could identify the properties, designate the zoning, what condition the property's in, and the square footage to make it more marketable. So it's an initiative that the Texas Historical Commission has just notified us about. And also wanted to congratulate staff, all their hard work and efforts have paid off in making sure that things drained well during your storm event on Saturday. And lastly, thank you for the commission allowing me to serve in the interim capacity. And most importantly, thanks to staff for all their wonderful support and help during this term.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
You did a great job. I know you're glad to get back to usual.
One.
Yeah, one more week. You count the days, aren't you?
Six.
Well, you did a great job for us. And congratulations to Deborah and her staff for the award. That's a, you know, we've had in that department, so. Anything else from the commission?
I don't have any.
Sure.
Oh. One of the announcements I'd like to make is the Kingsville Farmers Market was rained out last Saturday, so remember this Saturday, we're going to be having it, usual time. The other thing, and I don't know, Courtney, one last question. Is this appropriate? I was wondering if Jimmy, the golf course, could get up and kind of give us just a little... I'd like to give him a pat on the back. He's been doing such a great job. And maybe tell us how you've been doing out there the last month?
We're currently underwater, but expected on the front. We had a tournament last weekend, they got canceled. We got moved to the 5th of December. We're both all the way up through Thanksgiving, the tournaments on every Saturday. So that's good. We've increased our membership by 50% since I've been here. And we are hoping for new cards. The lease is up on those cards, and they're all about to fall apart, how they are. So I give Sam the best one every time.
Tell us about your leaks. I'm actually happy doing it.
Make sure I get the word. Make sure I have the flat.
Kind of equals out. No battery requirements. But actually, we're doing, we're doing really, really well. We're probably doing, I would say, probably 40 rounds. We're getting, averaging around 40 rounds a day, which is...
So you're bringing them back?
We are. And we're seeing a lot, we're seeing newer people out there. We do have the irrigation in, completed. Now we're fighting leaks, but that's just part of it. But we're pumping about 1,200 gallons a minute through that system now, which is big. So we're probably putting out about each an hour on fairways, keys, and reins. But it is financially pretty great. First month of this month, we did a little over 9,000 for the first week of this month, which was big. That was memberships, tournaments. We've got everybody school-wise on board with us again. I think that's huge. College girls, which are doing very good at their fall season. We've got all the high schools now participating with us. The cross-country meet was a surprise because we started out with only going to have 200 runners and we ended up having about 1,200 tips. So that was, that was pretty cool to watch all those schools out there. But we're doing good. I mean, we really are. I think we're really turning a corner. And I've talked to you guys on certain occasions about that. I think we're turning a corner. Still got a lot of cleanup work to do, but you know, like I told you guys, it's steps. And we're green, and we got watered, and it's being taken care of. So I'm excited.
I think we all appreciate what you're doing. And I understand we're getting golfers from Corpus coming on in now, too.
It's going to be counting. We are. We are. And we're starting to see female golfers. That's a plus, a big plus for that golf reaching. So little by little, we're getting it. You know, you guys are seeing it. And you know, we've got support, and that's what's important. So we'll keep going.
Well, thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt just a second.
Yeah.
David Brown, the architect, is working with the foundation.
Lurking about.
And is present. We asked him at our meeting last Tuesday to come and show the commission the color board that he and the foundation have worked on for the old high school slash new city hall.
Mr. Mayor, remember the council's committee with you in that... Davis.
What do you want?
No, Dave, you can...
Just hold on to it.
Hold on.
Just hold on to it.
Actually, what I did was I ran some press. By the time I put ceramic tile and a piece of plywood, it takes a couple of weeks. And certainly these are onwards, up there, so there's still something to negotiations. But I went ahead and ran this, which is a picture of the color selection board, and a couple of floor plans, so you can kind of see what we're talking about. Oh, it's a tile. Do you have those things?
Oh, that's fine. No problem.
Dave, that's great. You know, my, my doing that, that's perfect.
You'll raise it up a little bit?
This won't take long. The color selections are essentially complete on the building. What we have left are still restrooms and the ceiling and the community room. Everything else is picked, and I think the colors are going to be very, very striking and nicely done. The building is, the color scheme is necessarily understated. One of the, one of the things is when I started getting some help in doing this stuff, the common theme was exactly the same, and that was to take the building and respect its tradition. Not do a bunch of red and purple walls and try to make an architectural statement out of it. Let's try to, not necessarily to copy what was there either, because in some cases, we simply don't know what there was. But to do something that would be understated and sort of, as I say, respect the tradition of the building. In the middle of the, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll start with, you have little plans there. The, actually, I didn't do it for Dave. I'm going to do this for this guy on my end.
It's all yours.
The primary colors are down the hallways. You're going to see this real nice porcelain tile. It's kind of a brown. Very understated. Typical colors are walls and ceilings almost everywhere. So you can see no matter where you go, that works very, very nicely. As you work around the hallways, in the hallways, we have some ceramic tile as sort of accent walls, but again, very subtle. They're not, they're not going to jump out and get you. These happen typically around elevators, watercoaters, places where you can do more use. So I think that works out fine. Our typical base, this is a typical stain. And that stain is used almost everywhere. The windows are all stained from the inside. Doors are stained, wood trimmers stained. So basically, this color and these colors and this color sort of constitutes what's happening in the main hallways. As you step off the main hallways, we have departmental offices. The departmental offices are sort of broken up into two sorts of spaces. Office spaces for directors and folks that are a little higher up in the chain, and then inside, and then what I would call the more public spaces, when you come into a reception room, for example, the space that you publicly see. That's these colors right through here. All of the offices get a vinyl flooring, okay? It looks like wood, and unless you can be on your hands in these, you're not going to notice something. But you see it almost everywhere you go nowadays. It's not an unusual product. It's a great product, frankly. It's the only company I stay there for a reason. I think it was a beautiful thing to give a sense of the wood flooring behind it. They had all that already, maintenance issues to come through. In the, in what I call the public areas, as you walk up to those cabinets, you come into reception or something like that, we have the soft tile, which is basically a floor tile, but it's a high-over content floor tile that's developed specifically for hostels and over a long meantime. It puts a whole lot like stains. Cabinets are typically very understated. We haven't tried to do anything in particular with cabinets. We have put plastic laminate on them because it holds up very, kept it in there back then. Again, a wood stain, plastic laminate, countertop, it's a squash. Inside the departmental offices, we have a rubber base. Outside the departmental offices, we have a high, sort of historically accurate wood base, the stain, the tinfoil base. So again, that's what we're doing with this stuff right here. And these are just minor colorization, coil, doors that come down to the other operating community rooms, using the useful access to the rest of the facility, basically. And these are, that's just, you probably even noticed they're there, because that's the material. We're still, as I said, we're still working on the restrooms. This is not the Texas bed. It's the only sample I had of this car. But this is, this is what we're thinking about for the plastic laminate. They're not plastic, so they're solid. They're solid for toilet containers. We still got, I still have some, I don't have to tell the city to do that, so we're not quite there yet. In some of the specialty restrooms, we have, we use a cement tile, specifically the mayor's, because the mayor has a toilet, the senior has a toilet. The conference room downstairs in the community room, and the toilets down in the community room themselves are done. This stuff right here was very, very attractive. Parks back traditionally to the tile, as you ever walked into that building when you walked into the east entries, there's some squares, and actually, that's exactly what these are. It matches all the stuff that's there.
That's school colors. That tile's black and gold.
Is it right?
Yep.
I didn't know it was school colors. Well, I knew it wasn't out there. Actually, I never thought about it, to be honest with you.
No charge.
These go in, these now not only go in the east entries, but they also go in the south tower entry that you see from the parking lot. So they'll do that sort of pattern together. In the community room itself, we're going to use this bamboo flooring. And again, the colors are all stained pretty much the same. If that's a short version, I'd be glad to answer any more detailed questions.
The strip vinyl flooring, is the pattern all the way down to the thickness of the material, or is it a surface pattern?
It's down, it's all the way down. It can be swept, it can be scratched, but you might want to see.
It's a little way down, pretty well.
It's actually not, but that's one of the reasons we picked this. I did pick that one down the line, coming up, and we'll pass it off to the world.
All right. Good deal. Moving in.
2016.
You have to take the coin.
We still have some, we still have some, we've still got a few colors to pick, and we still have some financial things to work out.
We might have to have a meeting there. Our last meeting in December, we're going to have to have there. So we can, so we can say that we were in there in 2015.
I would like to take this man for an advertising, I want to go up and do a, I feel that you have a little contract.
Oh, yeah.
If this community had any idea how much money he has saved from Lady Snapper.
Oh, we thank the foundation for hiring you.
He's just, he's just a wonderful...
Yeah, Russ, he's done a great job. Not only the quality of work.
Quality of work superb. His flexibility is superb. We've stretched him sideways several times. He's come up smiling every time. So he's done a great job.
Good deal. Any other questions? I guess we need to do a tour sometime here.
Love to do that.
Yeah, we need to do that.
A lot of the walls are one coated now, like the stain is in, you can really start to see.
Maybe when, when this just gets here, we'll, we'll work something out.
Love to do it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Where are we on the, on the cottage?
We're going to be taking bids.
I can do that now, but we're in the right, right?
You can do it.
I don't remember the date, so I just have to...
December 14th. Do we have to advertise? Do we have to... I was ready to run off the streets, and I already woke up on my lady's sponsors.
Okay. Good deal. Good. Moving forward. When they poured that, they poured that concrete driveway, they put, they put a little extension for us to put our drop, our parking lot in front, and they, they're on the...
Yes.
Okay.
It's all, it's all coordinated.
Okay.
All coordinated.
Yeah, good deal. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, anything else?
One more thing. The Caesar Ditch, are we going to be able to get that trimmed off? We were there this weekend, there's lots of trees, and I know with that fence on the backside...
It makes it very difficult because of the fence and because of the metal being guardrail to get in there. And it has to be done by hand. If we're talking weed eater. However, I drove around during the hardest time of the storm, and I would, I'm not trying to toot my horn on this thing, but 21st Street in that old neighborhood, the Caesar Ditch, and Wildwood Trails, and the detention pound in Wildwood Trails did exactly what it was designed for, and it flowed very nicely.
Well, it was a good test, and I'll tell you...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it was on Saturday. So, but other than aesthetics, the ditch worked very well. It's just very difficult to get in. We'll, we'll have to do that by hand because of the fence on one side and the metal being guard fence on the other.
Can we find a contractor with the big boom that can go in there?
If you find the biggest boom, it's, it's still, it's a very difficult...
It's not going to work.
We have our own boom that we do.
Yeah.
And it's just because of the metal being guard, guardrail, and the fence on the Wildwood Trail side, it just makes it very difficult.
I knew we had a boom cutter, but I didn't know if we had, if you could get like a large one.
The boom cutter, as a matter of fact, we used right on the General Camasso's ditch last week. I sent pictures on those.
It's a picture in the staff report.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Mr. Brown already gone?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's gone, yeah. What's, what's the deal?
Well, I can't find my roofie.
Oh, you're, they, they put my roofie in the next year. That's going to be your toilet, too.
With a timer.
I might put it right over the back of a tree.
All right, thank you, Will. Appreciate it, yes.
I just personally want to thank Courtney for taking over the job. I know it's been a big sacrifice for you, I think.
How are you going to put that?
And, say it.
How are you going to pay it what? I'm a sort of a fisherman.
What?
Bad boy.
This community.
Different world here. And I just want to personally thank you for, for the dedication that you've had, shown in the past, and continue to show for the city. And, and thank the staff also. You guys have felt tremendously here during this transition, and I can't just, I can't find the words, okay? It's just great what you all have done. Appreciate what you have done.
Thank you. Good team.
Anything else? Okay, then we're going to go to public comments. It's an opportunity for anybody that wants to come up and speak or about any subject that they want to talk about on or off the agenda, you can just come up to the podium in Council Yard, where you live, and you have three minutes to talk about anything you want to talk about.
Someone need to talk? I'm here to talk about the Stride for Health, the 5K, 10K Run, and the 3K, the School of History of Kingsville 3K Walking Tour. These are new events.
Oh, you need to tell us who you are, where you live.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where I live. Lisa here. And I live at 14414 East Strand Road.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome. These are new events put on by the First United Methodist Church this year. The purpose of them is, well, kind of three things. One is part of the King Ranch, or Ranch Hand Festival on the weekend of November 21st and 2nd. And we are hoping that it would draw in additional people to Kingsville, which this will be advertised in Corpus and with different running groups around the area. The event is also designed to improve the quality of life for the residents of Claybrook County by encouraging a healthy lifestyle that includes physical fitness. And walking around town, getting signatures we needed, and talking to different groups. We may be succeeding at that. A lot of people are like, yeah, I need to go, I need to get out. I need to exercise, and they're like, yeah, I think I'll do that. So hopefully, this will encourage people to get out and have a good time and do some These events will also contribute to the sense of community. We play into the Ranch Hand kind of logo, you know, the ranching cowboy. So it kind of brings it together. It isn't this separate identity from Kingsville's theme now. The School of History of Kingsville, a walking tour. The run, you know, it's just for people to think, you know, I'm a runner, I'm athletic, I can do that. But for the rest of the citizens, I go, I don't think I want to do that. The walking tour is just a way of getting people motivated to move. And the history club is going to have historical spots along the trail, and they'll give us a brief little talk about the history of the area, and people move on to the next spot. So, you know, it's just encouragement to keep moving, learn a little bit about Kingsville. I think that's everything. Are there any questions?
Yeah, we're not supposed to talk here in this room. You do all the talking.
I'm pastor of First United Methodist Church. I live at 1634 West Santa Gertrudis. I just want to follow up on that to make sure that everyone understands, this is not a fundraiser for our church. The church is putting up the money for all of this. It's to benefit the community. The money that is, that comes in, each runner can choose a nonprofit in our community, and whichever nonprofit signs up the most runners, the church is guaranteed, guaranteeing that that nonprofit will get at least $500. If we get, I think break even with like 110 runners, then we can add to that. So I, I just don't want people to think we're here trying to promote something that's to benefit our church. No, this is to benefit the Kingsville community and the nonprofits in this community. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We have nothing on our considered agenda, so we'll go to our regular agenda. First time is consider a resolution authorized by the mayor entered into a interlocal agreement between Claybrook County and the cities of Kingsville for having an mitigation plan to be offered. Resolutions providing for an effective date. Mary?
Yes.
It's always good to see you.
Nice to see you, sir.
You bringing some money?
That's a little bit, but we need to get a little bit from you, too. Well, I'm Mary Moore, and I'm with Bryant Works. This is what I like to do.
What I like to do is with Bryant Works, and I'm in Austin, but I'm down here all the time, so.
Well, you got to just give us an idea. I pretty much know what it is, but maybe some of the commission might be interested in what this is.
Thank you for, for having us. This is my first time for you, but I think I've seen you at conferences before because you look familiar. So the item before you is addressing a resolution. There was a meeting that was held between Judge Madrid and Judge Turcot and the mayor, and they discussed the benefit of the three entities teaming up together to apply for grant funding for a hazard mitigation plan. The reason that Kennedy, we invited Kennedy is because if Kennedy goes on their own, the price for Kennedy to do their own plan really goes up. And the state emergency management does not prohibit another county joining another county. So on your agenda package, there is a handout that addresses where each of the entities are and their current hazard mitigation plan. So Kennedy County and Kingsville are currently part of the Coastal Bend-Cog Hazard Mitigation Plan, except that Kingsville has not adopted it yet, and that is an opportunity that you can do if you so choose and are eligible to actually apply for funding that becomes available for hazard mitigation. Kennedy County is on a different story. They, their plan expired, so it, on, in 2013. So for them, it's a real key that we get this plan started. The deadline to apply for the Hazard Mitigation Plan is November 29. Claybrook County would be the lead in this instance. They would be the ones that actually apply for the funds, but in the resolution that identifies who the parties are, it will identify city of Kingsville, Kennedy County, and Claybrook County. Claybrook County would be the taking the lead in the procurement process to hire the services of both an application for repair and to prepare the plan. So to participate in this hazard mitigation plan, if all three entities participate, the match share, which is, the total is 20,000, for an $80,000 plan, it's 6,667. So if each entity were going to go on their own with a match with a plan of 6,667, the match would be 16,667. So it's savings of about $10,000 for the city of Kingsville to participate with the other two entities. And the hazard mitigation plan, the funding is available for things like drainage improvements or... or warning signs, and this is part of your emergency management plan. I believe it's like an appendix or a chapter in that plan. So, the types of things that can be applied for, you have to have this hazard mitigation plan to apply for these additional funds that become available periodically as emergency funding is made available by the state. So, the, when you have a disaster, for example, had, if you've had a lot of damages and you get a designation for a federal disaster, you, the city is made a whole based on whatever, whatever level you can. But funds then become available to mitigate a hazard. So, if you have identified the need for a siren or a, um, or an area, better drainage in an area, then funds become available to address future, to avoid future, future damages. And so, this plan allows the city to apply. And we suggest that the city, although you have a current plan that could be adopted and you could apply, that it's, it takes one whole year before you will know whether you get funded or not. And then it will take another year, a year and a half. So, by the time this plan is prepared, your current plan, if you so choose to adopt it, would have, would be close to expiring. So, that's why we're coming before you to enter into, enter a local agreement with Clayburn County and Kennedy County.
I think an important issue is also each entity is, is, is going to be dedicated to, to what they, their needs are. So, Clayburn County may have whatever they want to have on their plan, so the City of Kingsville, so does Kennedy County. So, each one has their own plan. It's not like, okay, well, Clayburn decides this, and everybody else has to agree to it. No, it'll be the city's old plan, Kennedy County's old plan, same old type.
And what, what happens then is, is if, once this plan is approved, then City of Kingsville is independent, and they can apply for these funds individually. Kennedy County will be able to apply on their own. Clayburn County will apply on their own. You do not have to go back to Clayburn County to apply for additional funds that become available. If Kingsville, for example, if that plan except for the one that expired in twenty seventeen, you did move forward, but Clayburn did, then the city would need to go to Clayburn County and ask them to apply for these other types of funds. So, it would be an equal benefit for Kennedy, Clayburn, and Kingsville to participate so that they can independently apply in the future.
Any questions?
Has the City of Kingsville ever had access to these monies before? Is this money you heard?
I am not sure, except that I do know that you participated in a plan that was, has not been approved. And that was a, a plan that was prepared by the cog. So, but, and you still could in the future, if you're interested in participating and it comes before the city and would like to go ahead and adopt that plan, then whatever goals you set in that, that plan that expires in twenty seventeen, and there's money available, you could apply. Because right now, you have a plan that would be current if you so choose to adopt it. And it was the cog that prepared it. And I assume that there's a lot of entities in the cog that participated in this plan. Kennedy County, though, participated in, surprisingly, in a plan that was for order, including the doggo camera and brooks. And so, for some reason, Kennedy is not in the cog's plan.
Any other questions?
Now, I have a, the, the city's plan expired, you said, um, in twenty seventeen, correct?
It will expire, and, and the plan that was prepared by the cog expires in twenty seventeen, but the city's still need to adopt it.
Adopt it.
Okay, that, um, well, my question is, um, what we have to do, we would have to redo the, the cog plan in twenty seventeen for all the entities to continue?
No, this would be an update. It would be your independent, your, now you would not be part of the cog plan.
Stand alone.
Now, it would be the three entities in this one plan, and each community stand alone. You would have your own goals, your own assessment of needs.
Any other questions?
Courtney, is there any issues here?
No, sir. Whenever I had met with Ms. Kirby from Grant Works about a week or two ago, she said, you know, that it's always good to, like, every seventy years, I can't remember if it was three or four, what number she had thrown out to kind of update your plan, because your needs change over the course of time, which is why the plans have an expiration on them. And so, I, I think after, you had met with them too, you know, the savings to the city, and going ahead and participating in this plan and saving that extra about ten thousand dollars, as she stated, in taxpayer funds, so that we can be at the curve and making sure that we have a plan that is up to date and meets our existing needs.
There's a list in, in the, in the material that talks about what the money can be used for. There are several places that, that the city can use this money.
It's a rather, like, like she had mentioned, from the way it was explained to me, the way the plan, um, sorry, process to get a plan prepared and then to submit it, because it gets submitted to the state, and then the state has to approve it, and then it gets submitted to a department within the federal government, and then they approve it. So, eventually, a year or more from now, the plan would be finally blessed and approved, such that the entities participating in the plan would then be eligible to apply to the funding items that are listed at the bottom of the memo that's in the packet. And there's several items in there that, you know, would seem to be beneficial to our community.
But it, it would be an advantage to look at the cog's plan, to look and see what the goals were in that plan, and see if the city's interested in adopting, because if there is funding, you are, you would be eligible as soon as you adopt that plan for these items that you mentioned, Mary, that's listed on your packet.
On the administrative fees for this particular grant, is it going to be proportioned out?
No, it's part of the grant. The, the total package is eighty thousand to prepare the plan.
Right.
A portion of that is the match. So, the federal share is sixty thousand, and the local match divided by three entities is twenty thousand. So, it's, it's, that's what the, the plan would cost.
Okay. Make the motion with our resolution.
Second. Motion, Mayor. Commissioner Pena to approve the resolution, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Any other discussion?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Courtney, where are we going to get this funds from?
The six thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars would come from a funding source. When we were talking with the ladies from Grant Works, it is not foreseeable that the funds would be coming out of this year's fiscal budget due to the time period that it takes. But in the event that it does, we had set aside in the budgetary process some funds for grants, I think, in the city's special, so.
So, we do have money, so we'll look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other question? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Peake?
Yes, next item is consider resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation to contribute right-of-way funds, fixed price for improvements to the US seventy-seven for right-of-way acquisition and relocation adjustment of utilities from General Cabasus Boulevard to southern city limits along US seventy-seven. Portman?
Captain, yes, sir.
And Oscar's here.
We'll let touch that do most, most of the talking, but just to make sure that the total project that they're going to be working on is from General Cabasus Boulevard to the southern city limits along US seventy-seven. However, the proportion of, I think, that they're requesting from the city would just be for that portion of this entire project that falls within the city limits. So, essentially, from General Cabasus Boulevard to the southern city limits.
She pretty much summed it up. Oscar Solis, representing Texas. Also have, uh, with us, you're famous. Heard of it before. Also have, uh, here for Lucas and a little bit of business. The last one here from the right-of-way division. We may be able to answer some questions if there are any questions. Like Courtney mentioned, this project is, is part of the overall I sixty-nine forward on US seventy-seven. You'll see some of the construction going on now, Robstown Bishop area. Just completed a small lay of that at Caesar Avenue. This next leg is from General Cabasus Boulevard south to the, to what we call the Y, the connection of US seventy-seven and US seventy-seven. With, with this project, we will require, um, some additional right-of-way. You can see, maybe, maybe able to see a little map that Charlie.
Where's Mr. Mason? Where's Mr. Mason?
I imagine it's more than this.
They beat me to it, guys, sorry.
Mr. Mason?
The damn important one is Jerome Theater, the next page. So, South Creek is right there. And the overpass is over there on seventeen seventeen.
Seventeen seventeen.
Yes. And then, uh, sort of hit on, on the, the exit is going to be right here.
This is General Cabasus Boulevard south.
Right. The exit is right there on seventeen seventeen. This is all furnished road now. So, the exit's seventeen seventeen, overpass, overpass right here on seventeen seventeen. And it'll come down on this side and South Creek is right away.
The real significance of this, of these improvements are it's going to make a shovel ready for any monies available for the overpass at seventeen seventeen.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Which is wild. We, we currently don't have construction funding, but, but this work that we're doing now with the right-of-way acquisition and utility adjustments, putting in place these agreements really put us in a good position to capitalize when those monies become available. So, so we've estimated approximately three and a half, three and a half million for right-of-way and utility adjustments. Normally, the local contribution or the local match is ten percent. However, last week, we were notified that Clayburn County has been classified for FY sixteen as economically disadvantaged county.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Which the good news for the city is that brings that contribution match down to five percent.
Oh, that's a, yeah.
So, we're looking, we're looking at approximately a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars contribution from the city for those portions.
Is that over the same six years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Twenty-five thousand a year, instead of fifty-eight, more or less. Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, uh, Mr. Solis?
Yeah, the.
One quick question.
Sure.
What, what is our timeline that we're hoping to have all this accomplished?
The, the agreement needs to be in place pretty quickly, only because the appraisal on the right-of-way and architecture left it, and they have a shovel back if you will. If we don't get this agreement in place, I'd say within the next month or so, we could be in jeopardy of putting that timeline back and having to reapray some of these parcels. As far as construction goes, that, that's still the big, the big question.
That's the question.
Yes, sir.
So, can you give us a ballpark?
We're, we're hoping for some money to, to come out of Prop seven, just depending on how, how the voters of the great city of Texas.
Still saying, you want to get this?
Think about that. Otherwise, we, we don't have, we don't have funding allocated in sixteen or seventeen to cover the cost of.
We'll be ready for it when there is money.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Any other question?
Yeah, on, uh, Charlie, on, on the, uh, the RV park and that development across the street, there's going to be an access road for them?
That's correct.
Just to exit, where, where would they go?
They would come out of the RV park or South Creek, would come out of their, their complex and take a right and go down to what that overpass would be, which is now.
The Y.
The Y. That would be closed off, but they would go to the Y, do a turnaround to head north.
So, they have to go all the way out there to the back, which would be safer.
In the end, yes, it is, it's safer. They have their own furnished road, lower speed, and not crossing traffic. That's correct.
And I have one more question, ma'am. On the, on page three-ten, on your E section, there, I read something to the effect of, if there is a drainage problem that was not anticipated by either the state or the city, that we would be warned to handle that expense on our own if, if a drainage problem exists while this project is complete. Do I read that correctly?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, can you read? You read that correctly? Unfortunately, I'm not, I'm, I'm reading E here with you, but that, that looks to be, that looks to be the case.
And we, uh, I guess the engineer, have we looked at that issue?
At, at this point, no, we're still in the preliminary phases as far as design is concerned. However, to, to the city's advantage and the state's advantage, there's a creek in the middle of the, of the, of the project. So, drainage shouldn't be an issue, because.
But erosion could be.
Erosion, that's correct. And we'll take a look at what, what remedies are.
It, it, it reads, it reads as if there were any actions done by the commission that changed some of those.
If the county commissioners' court had issued a rule or an order or a policy or directive, or if a local government that had jurisdiction over that area had issued a rule, a policy or a directive that impacted the outdoor advertising or stormwater drainage facility requirements and made them more restrictive than the state or federal requirements, then we would be responsible. But if no such rules or orders are enacted, then we're still.
I'm just concerned about the drainage situation and probable erosion that might occur in that area, since you're kind of reconstruct everything and move dirt around and, and build up the area.
Right, and, and, and that's been looked at kind of from, from a high level during our environmental clearance process. We'll continue to look at that during project development and design to, to address those concerns.
Thank you. Sir, any other questions? Make the motion to approve, set resolution.
And I would just make a modification, and hopefully this motion will include that modification on whereas number five, in light of the new information that we just received at the meeting tonight, we'll revise it to read the city's five percent contribution equals one hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, which can be paid out over six equal annual installment payments of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-nine cents.
And my, and my motion will include the additional modifications as stated by, by the interim signature. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Pena to approve this resolution and amend it, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended in fiscal year two thousand fifteen. Oscar, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you for the consideration. Thanks for King Street, the Fourteenth Street, the Corral Street, and everything you've done.
General Cabasus.
No, 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 no.
We'll give you, we'll give you six straight back, see if we can redo that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Oscar. Amendment to fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget to include Texas Farm and Transportation agreement to contribute right-of-way funds for the US seventy-seven highway I sixty-nine project. This is just to clean up for the budget for this last item.
Correct. And then, and when we bring that back for adoption, they'll have a, a day of. The lower amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-nine cents.
That's correct. So, that's a, if anybody had this in introduction items, coming back up. If you have an issue or something, give it to the city manager or wait till next meeting. If, if, if no one has a question, we're going to next item, consider authorizing purchase of one John Deere tractor or loader bucket for the ground maintenance department via by board as per staff recommendation.
Mayor, Commissioners, always a pleasure. This is for our new ground maintenance department. It's a medium to large size John Deere tractor that will fit most of our other, the, the bat wing mower and things like that. So, uh, it's just an additional piece of equipment that will assist in primarily the stormwater maintenance with our given attachments that we already have. It is a.
This is for the guys we just hired, the extra guys to work drainage.
And like I said, it is, we're getting it from John Deere, Robstown. And like I said, it's, we're getting it from John Deere, Robstown Hardware, to be the delivering dealer, and it is on a by-board contract for 47-14. It is made in America and it is green and gold.
Thank you, David.
And there's money in the budget.
Yes, the money is budgeted in under capital equipment on utility.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Garcia to authorize purchase of this American-made John Deere tractor, taken by Mr. Pickles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Fania?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Mayor Fugge.
Yes. Next item is consider authorize lease of 45 new 2016 Yamaha golf carts for the only rain golf course, via board as per staff recommendation.
Our current lease is up.
The ones that we're going to get, they're, they're really, they are really nice, and the old ones, Jimmy might be doing that to me, I never even, sometimes I can be awfully naive, but, you know, they're, they're wore out.
They're...
They're completely depreciated.
Yeah, they need to be replaced. The lease is up. This'll, these'll actually be a little bit cheaper per month, I think our current lease, you know, in here from the counties, about $58 per cart, and these will be $50 a cart, and it'll be 45 carts, so it'll run $2,250 a month. Their gasoline, they should last no problem, a five-year length of the lease, it is a by-board contract, financing is done by Yamaha Financing, and they are made in the factory in Noonan, Georgia, which is approximately 40 miles southwest of Atlanta. It's a community of about 35,000 people. Yamaha plant, where they go in, they run a set of golf carts, they change the assembly line, they run a set of jet skis, they change the assembly line, and it's a...
That is in the USA.
I tell you what, we get any more rain like we did last week, then we might need a couple of those jet skis. All right.
And it is a budgeted item, so...
Make the motion to get approved. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Pena to purchase these golf courts, seconded by Commissioner Pickles. Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am. What's going to happen with the old ones? Are we going to get some kind of...
They're off lease, they just come pick them up and...
They're off lease.
They are going to leave us the utility cart that was on the lease, it's, it's off lease, and they're just going to leave us the utility cart, and I've also thrown in a range ball picker.
All right. Two range ball picker, two.
So, yeah. So, I mean, it's one that came off lease from another golf course, and it's for picking up range balls. It's been knocked around and beaten. Some people aim at the range ball, some people can't help but hit it.
I'm not that good.
Yeah. So, they just decided to let us have it. It's not like they can repaint that one and take it out to Bushwood and sell it to them or anything, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fania?
Yes.
Mayor Fugge.
Yes.
If y'all don't mind, I would like to just go ahead and take up the 14. Take that out of the... Order, thank you. Consider city participation 2015 stride for health 5K 10K run to take place on November 21st, 2015.
I'd love to give you a nice map. I know it's so hard to do these maps that you get with your agenda packets, but it's, it's just a product of the way we have to do things by the time we scan it and everybody can read the dang thing, so... I already, I also have applications, because Lisa would like to see everybody out there participating, and so I'll do a little promotion as well, at least an electric bike.
Commissioner Pickles now being that 10K.
I can't believe it. Is there a meal at the end of this thing?
Excuse me?
Is there a meal at the end of it?
Carrot sticks.
He has a little carrot stick or something?
Carrot sticks, no celery, whatever. I think that Ms. Hugh has gone over the reasons for it. One thing that has changed a little bit, you see you have a, a budget for the public works portion, and we had a meeting last Thursday with Mr. Cullen, us and Chief Torres and Lisa, and it had myself, and talk about how we're going to do this exactly. It came up in the discussion about police protection, because you see in your map that, well, the route is going down Santa Gertrudas, and there's a concern at the intersection of Santa Gertrudas and Armstrong and Santa Gertrudas on Third, those are a little bit dangerous. That morning, there'll be people coming in, probably using Santa Gertrudas to go out to the ranch and breakfast. Mr. Cullen suggested we close the shoulder, we're not closing the below, we're just closing the shoulder, much as he has done in Corpus for the beach debate event, but there's still concern about those intersections. So, there was an additional request for one patrol car at each of the two intersections with an officer maybe directing traffic or just out there, but that would be an additional, probably $300, and that could be either done, like, in public works out of the budget or with a budget amendment, but, but the organizers would like to have that request to the budget.
Any questions?
I have one. Have we talked to UPD, the city of Clayboro, be willing to help out a little bit?
Yeah, yes, UPD is willing to help in the portion that goes through the university, but I believe also, of course, something that he would feel more comfortable with, the city police on those portions.
What about the county reserve officers?
Excuse me?
The county reserve officers?
I know, they didn't really, you know, we can first zoom out.
I think you can get, I think you can get the message on the 5K or the 10K, do we have a choice, either one, or do we have to do both?
No, you have a choice.
If I may, to answer your question, Commissioner Pickles, the county reserve officer here, this is around the same time, and in the morning of the ranch hand breakfast going on. Typically, those county reserve officers and the mounted officers are over at the ranch directing traffic. The other thing, the 5K and 10K, it's almost the same traffic control and route, especially over by the university, it's almost the same route. So, the same on the 5K, the same officers being used on 5K and 10K, and the same traffic control for the most part is being used for the 5K and 10K, in the critical areas, which is over by the university.
I just don't want that, Elka, see if it can run through.
There's a 3K walking tour as well that we need to mention.
And that stays on the sidewalk.
That stays on the sidewalk.
So, they're on the sidewalk.
So, the choice is on the person participating, whether it's 5K or 10K?
Yes, or the 3K walk.
Or 3K, okay.
And it is at the, at the same time as the ranch hand breakfast?
It's early now.
It's early.
It's seven, I think it starts at 7:15 is the start time for the run.
What's those ranch hand breakfasts?
It's open at 7:00.
After we finish the run, we'll go and eat. Or you can go eat and then come run. Fifteen minutes, I don't want you to be bummed and all over the place.
Any other questions? This is an action item. Make the motion to be approved. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Pena to approve the city participation in this event, seconded by both Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Pickles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fania?
Yes.
Mayor Fugge.
I'm going to abstain. I actually go to church.
No.
It's hard to believe.
This is a lot of running, not going to church. You need to go to church.
Next item is consider resolution destined to authorize signatories for financial health trust plan and other items for city business, the interim city manager, the city manager. It's just housekeeping to make sure that, that when Mrs. gets here next week, that he gets the ground writing checks.
Correct, and all of the financial institutions, and there's a lot of documents to be signed.
Yes.
And the health plan require a resolution from the local governing body to denote the change.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Garcia to approve this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Pickles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fania?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Fugge.
Yes.
Next item is consider acceptance of a $500 donation for the city, for the Kingsville Fire Department. And I think this is you, but I, you know, Chief, you don't, I, I know everybody read the letter, I, hey, tell your guys that they, they really do a great job, EMS people that answer these calls, and I know firsthand, because they dealt with my mother on a pretty regular basis, and the professionalism, the, the care that they give these people is just amazing, and this is an example of that. This lady was, you know, in really bad shape, and they showed up and they did, they did their thing, and as a consequence, she, she gave, were to give them 500 bucks, and it's a good, good pleasure putting the money, so... Does anybody have any questions about this?
Make the motion, we accept the donation.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Pena to accept the $500, seconded by Commissioner Pickles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fania?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Fugge.
Yes. Next item is consider introduction of an ordinance amended fiscal year 2015, 2016, general fund budget to accept and expend a donation for the Kingsville Fire Department. And again, this is going to go into, in the monies available for, is it...
Employee recognition.
Yeah, okay, that's okay.
We don't, we don't have any funds in that account this year.
Okay, good. This is an introduction item, if anybody has any questions or issues with that, please contact the city manager, or we'll bring it up to the next meeting. We're skipping nine and 10, we'll go to 11, consider introduction of ordinance amended fiscal year 2015, 2016 utility fund, CEO series 2011 utility budget for water well 23 repairs, completion of an 18-inch waterline transmission project, and completion of water well 25. Yes, ma'am?
In your packet, it gives a memo from public works department, talking about the projects that basically didn't have their finish for last year, were carrying forward those projects, and how we did the budget, we didn't know if those projects were going to be completed last year or the following year, so we didn't budget for them, and so this is just a budget amendment to, to be able to pay for them this year.
Okay. Any questions about that bill? Do you have anything to add?
Mayor, Commissioner, oh, we didn't budget for them, we thought these projects would get finished through the year, through the rains, so... Water well 25, the well driller had some problems in the 36-hour test with his equipment, and so it went over a little bit longer there. The, the 5125 with the 18-inch waterline, there's still two connections that we need to make, and they're working with the city, because we have some valves that we need to replace to control some major water lines, so that that portion can get done. And then, on well 23, we tried to rehab that well before the end of the year, and we found it to be a lot more deteriorated on the piping than, than expected, so that's going to require some additional repairs to get that back online.
All right. Any questions? This is an introduction item. The money, even though we didn't complete a last budget period, we have the monies available this budget, or not?
It's in the utility fund, fund balance, and there is sufficient funds there to cover these expenses. Utility funds.
Again, if you have any questions about this, or, you know, we can bring it in, introduction item, talk to the city manager, if you have any questions, bring it up to the next meeting. Let's go on to the next item, consider introduction of ordinance amended fiscal year 2015, 2016, code of ordinance of the city of Kingsville, Texas, chapter 11, article 7, food sales, food establishment, sections 15 and 17, providing for adoption of the new Texas food establishment rules and clarification of permit provisions. Mia?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners. The Texas Department of State Health Services recently updated their TFR, which is the Texas Food Establishment Rules, and it was adopted and approved by the city of Texas. And in order for us to be compliant with them, we need to adopt this new TFR when it comes to food services. We're going to repeal the old and adopt this new TFR.
So, this is kind of administrative issue, housekeeping. It's not that that's going on locally that's bugging you?
No, no.
Okay.
More rules and regulations are followed.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, if not, this is, again, an introduction item. If you have any questions, you can bring it up to city manager, or you can ask questions for the, for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended the code of ordinances of the city of Kingsville, Texas, chapter 15, article 5, historical districts and landmarks, section 15-5-4, providing for an application fee for local historic landmark designations.
Okay, thank you. Well, I already have a process for designating local landmarks. The issue with the application or whatever that the staff prepared earlier is tied just exclusively to the abnormal tax application, so the Historic Development Board is working on a new application. You have seen already the, no, we've already approved this.
Yeah.
Okay, so we approved that. So, really, what prompted all of this was a decision to require that landmarks have this, or that's, or the reason for choosing landmarks is so people know they are landmarks, and, you know, it's educational, and so... In order to do that, we need to be able to collect the funds for that, and also the Historic Development Board, kind of following the state, the way the state does things, they wanted to set aside any monies, they were planning to charge 125 for these markers, they cost maybe 85 or something, so they wanted to set aside that additional funds, so that if somebody comes forward and can't afford the marker, then there will be some funds, and the state does that, because they do the same thing, so...
All right. Again, this is an introduction item, I mean, if you have any questions, you can bring it to the city manager, or you can bring it up for your next, for our next meeting. Okay, thank you. Next item is consider approving revised letter agreement with Mr. Meadows for staff recommendation. This, in reading the, the reports that you had here for our documents, according to this, is this legal sensitive, this document? Is this something that we really want to talk about openly?
Well, the city commission had previously approved the August 13th, 2012 letter agreement, and it was in the packet at the time, that it went before the commission, and there were some items in there that the, the city had said that they were committed to do in exchange for some of the things that Mr. Meadows was providing to the city, and now there had some items on the 2012 agreement that were still outstanding, and with the new development, there was a little bit of extra, I guess, square footage above that was going to be built out above what was originally designated in the 2012 agreement. So, since he had some outstanding items and we had some outstanding items, it seemed like a good opportunity to kind of renegotiate, and staff worked with Mr. Meadows on that, and I believe, it's my understanding from having talked to staff, that Mr. Meadows is in agreement with what's in here.
Because there was some language in there that, that kind of concerned me, and I didn't know if we wanted to discuss that here.
Some of the information attached is the same as what was in the prior document, that the commission had proved and that he had signed off on.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, as you know, as Courtney was saying, in 2012, you approved the agreement where the city would do the drainage issues at 1500 East General Cabasos and the building permit fees would be waived in the future. Well, the future's here. He approaches, as again, Courtney said, he would like the building permit fees waived for the building that you approved, the special use permit request that you approved at your last meeting, at 700 General Cabasos, which amount to $4,830. And in return, Mr. Meadows will pay for and construct the drainage improvements to the property at 1500 East General Cabasos.
Okay, any questions about this?
I guess I have location of the drain pad. I couldn't find it in the map. It was, the map was kind of distorted.
Kind of dark, yeah. It's on the east side of the building at 1500 East General Cabasos, east side of that, going, running north and south. And it's forming that pad-type swell that he's going to put on top of ground to stop the erosion, correct, Charlie?
Real quick, what are the locations? Between both, both storage units. Yeah, between both storage units, between best storage and General Meadows' storage, in between that grassy area, on top of that would be the swell. The concrete little, it's not a ditch. It's a concrete swell pad that'll go to the, to the ditch on General Cabasos.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, any other questions about this? Second? Motion made by Commissioner Loubert to approve this agreement, seconded by Commissioner Pecos. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Loubert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pecos?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Fugan?
Yes. Next item is considered introduction of ordinance amendment to code of ordinances of Kingsville, Texas, chapter 15, land usage, Article 1, building regulations, sections 15-1-5-6, divided for adoption, adoption of the 2014 edition of the National Electric Code.
The code is out, the building official has it, he's reviewed it, he, he believes and has recommended to me, due to the commission, to adopt it as a whole.
Any questions about this? You know, sometimes I get, get these contractors and developers, probably from out of town, and they say that we got different rules than everybody else. I get that all the time.
Yeah, I mean, this is a.
Are we going to have the same rules as everybody else?
Yes, yeah, the National Electric Code is. And we've always had them, always had.
The international.
Yeah, it's just the update. It helps.
Okay, good.
We have the international.
They had the southern, they had the southern code.
You're just getting the building test.
Yeah, right.
This is the National Electric Code.
Okay, this is an introduction item, again, if you have any questions, bring it to the city manager or maybe that's me. Maybe I'm starting to call it because I'm getting nervous about this. Consider introduction of ordinance amendment to code of ordinances of the City of Kingsville, chapter 11, dual regulation, part 10, street and sidewalks to add street maintenance fees, section to establish monthly street maintenance fees for the purpose of funding the city street system.
Someone get the mayor some water.
Establishing a street maintenance fund in appeal cases.
Get some used water.
I'll make some used water.
I just finished out.
All right, so this is going to take you, Charlie. We're getting this, turn my water with me. All right, so this is, this is an introduction item of the final draft of our street maintenance and improvement program, and on street maintenance fee. It's like, Charlie. Again, recap, we've updated on the bottom of this, of 2015, we've done 32 blocks so far this year. We have about 18 to go for the rest of the year on these blocks. Again, it's a 20-year program, we're doing about 40 blocks a year. The residential fee, we're keeping it at $5, about 69% of what we collect from residents, 69%, that's 69%, I'm sorry, of the total fee that we're collecting. We did, again, the apartments, multifamily, the definition of multifamily is a house, which is the apartment in the back, and single family, which is residential. The, the multifamily is $5 for the first house, 425, which is 85% of that rental in the back. Go back, Charlie, I'm sorry. So what we've calculated, I'm coming up with, from residential costs, a total of And again, there's a little breakdown of how many residents we have, or households that we have, which is 6,636, how many apartment units we have, 3,999, and how many multifamily units we have, which is 170.
Where does the 85% occupancy rate come from?
The 85% occupancy rate came from our previous discussion, which was, this is number four, on our discussion number one, we mentioned what our, there are some houses that, hey, look, I don't have anybody living in, in the apartment, why are you going to charge me for the apartment I have in the back? Or, hey, I don't have everybody living at the squares, why are you charging me for every unit that I have when I have no one living at the square? That's a valid point. So we said, we decided, or the commission, through discussion decided, 85% would be a good occupancy rate for our city.
I do?
Some, yes, sir, sometimes you might think that it might be higher than that. And we could certainly change those numbers. And, and as a matter of fact, it's just a preliminary number, because if we find out, it could go up, it could go low, because when we find out that more people are living in, in those apartment units, we can increase that, that fee, which is 425.
Sure.
So then we come to, this is the one that we've had some discussion on, the non-residential fee. Again, we have our, our formula, so we have the base price of $5 of what every resident is paying. Then we come up with the equivalent residential unit, which is the footprint of a house divided by the standard of 24-25. So the average square footed, square footage of, of a footprint of a property here in Kingsville is 24-25. So that's how we come up with that ERU. And then we have a trip generator, and it's not a household, I'm sorry, it's a business, it's a non-residential business. You know, I know you're thinking, man, what house is 24-25? No, it's not a house, it's a business, that's the average size of, of business. The trip generator, as per the ITE, the Institute, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Handbook, has a certain trip factor for over 100 and, what did we say of our categories were? There were like 170, 150, 170 different categories. Everything from a law firm, to an insurance agency, to a dentist, you know, things like that. And I look at y'all with those eyes, we're sick.
We don't have a dentist, but.
So then, when we were doing this formula, these calculations, and the last time we talked about the different tiers, I still had, or the team, we had a team, our street team, still had some concern as far as the, the amounts that some of these non-residentials were paying in the end result. On our third discussion, we had a, what was it, 75% discount on the trip generation. Now we went to a 90% discount on the trip generation, just to even out those numbers, to bring down some of those prices, and also to make it more compatible to a city our size. Okay, by the way, thanks to Mr. Gitter, he's our, he was the researcher on our team, by the way, and the city of Corsicana just passed their, their fee, what, two weeks ago?
Something like that.
Which is kind of relative to our, to our size.
They're going to need it. You sure they got 21 inches of range?
They are going to need it. So then, we had an eight-tier system on our, on our third discussion. Now we came up with an 11-tier capping system for this ordinance. So that breaks down the number of tiers that we have, and it's based on the points, the ERUs, times the, times the trip generation. So if you had anything under, under, over 40, it's, the cap was 150. Now, what you see in the parentheses is how many non-residential entities. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I did a typo, did y'all notice that? Did y'all notice that? I'm sorry. I put eight-tier capping system, it's an 11-tier capping. Charlie?
Charlie, you don't have to edit your notes.
You did.
So anyway, you noticed that term right now, I apologize. But anyway, there's 54 agencies that had that tier one, there's 41 agencies that are in that tier two, and so on and so forth. So the bulk of it is going to be that bottom tier of 11, that paying $10, the bulk of it, of, of our agencies is 155 of those businesses now, we brought that down. So you're going to see more on those bottom tiers than you would on the top tier. And this is to help differentiate those businesses that are comparable, but not really like a grocery store, for an example. I always use it in, in Norfolk, anyone, but I would compare Betels Grocery to HEB, which is unfair, it's an unfair comparison, right? And of course, Betels Grocery shouldn't be paying what HEB pays. And those are, we know that those are different trip generators, but as we're coming out of the manual, we wanted to make it more fair. So that's what, that's broken down there. In the end, what we collect from the non-residential fee is $285,960,000, which really almost comes out to that, what was that percentage, Charlie, we're talking about?
32%.
32%, which comes up with, with kind of that 69%, remember I told you 69% of our residential streets? So now we're really, we're really fair. You know, when, when, at the beginning, at our discussion number one, we wanted to do 50-50, you know, the residents pay 50 and the businesses pay 50. Now we really got into the real fair thing, where 69% of the streets, 69% are going to be paid by the residents, and, and the rest, so on, by the, by the non-residents. So, we do have for the fiscal year 2015-2016, $331,000 that we're going to be finishing out and using for this year. This also gives us an opportunity this year, again, to evaluate the new taxes that we'll be receiving from new developments and new apartment complexes and things like that. And we can earmark X amount of funds if you wanted to, to go towards a fee. Because in the end, at the beginning, we said, oh, we need 1.6 million, and then we said, we need 1.2 million. Well, in the end, now we're just getting $906,000, which in reality, it's a stretch and we can make it work. Some of the ideas that we're going to be using is more seal coating, more technology and things like that to make these streets last longer and to make it within that 20-year plan. Now, it was discussed, well, why can't you make a 25-year plan? Well, now the whole matrix is, is thrown off and it actually gets more expensive because of the life of the street. And when we come into, every year, by the way, we evaluate our streets, this is a yearly thing, in the spring, we evaluate the streets and those numbers change. And the, the list change. You know how we, we bring to the commission in our budget, the lists of streets that we're going to do? And that list might change depending on the score because of the evaluation that we'll do. So when someone says, well, when is my street going to be done? And we have it, well, it's going to be 2022. Well, we'll reevaluate the street and it might go back to 2025, depending on the condition, or it might move forward, depending on the condition, as we evaluate every year. But rest assured, it's going to be 40 blocks a year that we'll, we'll end up doing.
Charlie?
So, yes, sir.
Change the screen, go back. You only indicate yearly cost, but are, are those from 1 to 11 monthly?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Are you going to be showing this slide to the public?
It is public information, yes, sir, I can, and I can update to reflect that, that that's a monthly.
Yeah, you need to make some kind of notation that it's monthly?
Yes, sir.
On the charge?
I, I did have it on the, on the past slides, monthly, but I wanted everything to fit in the slide, so I took out, I, I made a poor assumption, but I can absolutely put the monthly charge on there. I mean, per month, $10 slash $10.
For clarity.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Charlie.
So then, part of the ordinance, we also discuss, there's a appeal process for the non-residential fee, and there are, the city manager will appoint two residents as part of the, the team, and will, the team will be monthly. The board is comprised of the public works director, the finance director, the director of development and planning, and then also, again, two residents appointed by the city manager. And then the appeals board can decide to take action or, or no action, as far as the appeals for these non-residents. The commission had asked, the last time we discussed, hey, Charlie, have you reached out to any of the non-residents? Which we did. And some of it, we talked to the Chamber of Commerce, we talked to the Rotary Club and other civic clubs, to get a hold of what they were thinking. Some of the questions were, and it was Mr. Clyde Allen, and he had a valid, he had a valid question, it was a very good one. He says, what about our businesses that are banded? We don't even have utilities open on it. I said, that is a prime example of what you need to bring to the appeals, to the appeals board, and the appeals board will make that decision. More than likely, yes, there's no fee if you have a, a business in transitions, you know? And then the same thing, they mentioned, well, what if I bought this business and I haven't transitioned it to what we're doing now? Whether it's a bar, new barber shop, because there's a difference, or a travel agency, you know, type of deal. And that's where they come to the appeals board and says, hey, look, because we can't keep track of that, but they do, and once they see it, it's a, what's, what's going to, why is this fee here? And I'm a this kind of business and not that kind of business. So that's one of the purposes of the appeals board, and that was the feedback that I was getting from the businesses. The other feedback I got, and it wasn't, they had a lot of questions on government housing, and again, government housing is, is exempt. We had questions on, of course, the university and other government agencies, and we took care of some of those questions. Not too many negative feedback on, on the, the businesses, but I'm sure once they see the, their bill, it might, might bring it to our attention.
On that example that Mr. Allen brought up, if a business is not operating, once a business does start operating, regardless of what the use is, what's the process for getting that particular business to pay?
They come, because they come in to do their, their, their water bill.
Okay.
And it'll be tacked on once they get their utility bill.
So it's going to be an alert?
Yes, sir.
Notification?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And rest assured that they'll raise a flag. It'll raise a flag and we'll put it in our system. So every once in a while, hey, go check that, go check that warehouse. If you see a party going on, then you know they're in business, or something like that. Effective date, January 1st, is what we're looking at. We're going to establish that appeals board, we're going to do an online process and some FAQs online, and then of course, a web link, and, and, and so where you could type in what your business is, let's say you're from out of town and you want to develop here in Kingsville, and you want to know everything about your property, we get, that's a common thing that happens, they always want to know if there's water lines, sewer lines, how close it is to make a freeway, and all that kind of stuff. These, these developers look into that, and then they're going to look into the formula, okay, well, what is my utility bill going to look like? What is my, so they get that street user fee, they get, like, well, maybe I'm not going to have that kind of business, maybe I'll have this kind of business to lower it down, or, or they'll do the math and make, and make sure that they'll have their profits. I mean, they, they know what they're doing. So, but we want to have that information ready for them, where they can calculate their fee. So, we did an open records request with the City of Corpus Christi, and we compared our fee to their fee. We flat out said, we want to know your street user fee for these businesses. Clever Bank. Just because I know that they have what's called their flagship Clever Bank office off of Port Ayers, out there in, in, in Corpus Christi. They're paying $561 a month. What the Clever Bank's going to pay here, $30 a month. At least. A leased office space, and we were looking at a law firm, and I say a leased office space. So something like Clever Bank, where you have your law offices upstairs on Clever Bank, we're looking at that, and some of the offices over there in Corpus Christi are paying $229 a month. Here, a law firm like Lupito Mendoza's Law Firm, $15 a month, just to give you an idea. An auto dealer, an auto dealer, I looked at, and I didn't want to say it, I'll say it. I looked, I looked at Blake Fuller, they would pay $100 a month. We looked at, what, Love, Love Presler in Corpus Christi, $249 a month is what they're paying. So just to give you an idea what the non-residential are going to be paying here in Corpus, in Kingsville versus what they're going to pay over there in Corpus Christi.
Next slide, Charlie.
Charlie, is it, is it disproportionate when you look at Clever Bank and the auto dealer comparison?
No, sir. The difference is, again, so just don't look at the footprint of the business, but the trip generation that's happening. Car dealerships has more trip generation than a bank would.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So now, before you, as a, the team, and thank you to Ms. Alves, wrote the ordinance stating these, putting all this into, into an ordinance to be enacted, and this is an introduction item, so...
It is an introduction item, but I would encourage the commission to spread the word if you're anywhere, you know, bringing up the conversation, bringing up the conversation because, you know, Kingsville's unfortunately, doesn't have a lot of media coverage. I know we're, we're, we're public tonight, and we'll be public in our next meeting. We've had, we've had public hearings on this in the past. It's a, it's a, it's a big step for the city, and I want people to, I want people to know that this is, this is in all likelihood going to happen in some form or fashion.
And to make sure that there is clarification, the ordinance also sets up a street maintenance fund so that all the funds collected for this purpose would go only into that fund and be only used for those designated places.
That's what I'm telling everybody. Again, everybody that I'm talking to is okay with it, as long as it goes to that fund.
That was another thing that they mentioned over at the chamber of commerce was. Is this one specifically for streets?
I think the reality is getting people there.
Well, I think, and also an argument to use also is the fact that if you look at our budget, it's, there's not a lot of bad in it, so we're taking care of business, don't get me wrong, but we're not, we're not. Okay, then, kind of appropriately, I don't believe. Any other questions? Okay, it's again, another introduction item, and we'll certainly have an opportunity to ask questions next time. If you have any to retake, maybe then comes up.
Thanks, Charlie. Thank you, Charlie. Good job. Thank you for your direction. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, that's all for this. We have the city manager, we are adjourned.